I officially call this meeting to order. Please rise for the invocation and pledge of allegiance.
Let's bow our heads, please. Heavenly Father, we come before you this day in gratitude and seeking your blessing upon those who lead our city. Empower us to stand and serve our community. May every decision we make, that we respond and be generous to the public and our staff, help us guide or help us move forward, Lord, and guide us through all the decision makings that we make. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which sustains, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a proclamation for Damas Catolicas Day. Ms. Carrillo, please.
Yes, Mayor and City Council. With us today, we have Ms. Judy de la Garza, who is president of the Damas Catolicas. And Ms. Irma Perez is vice president. Selma Ferment is treasurer and Carmela Martinez -- no, I think Selma Ferment is secretary and Carmela Martinez is treasurer. The proclamation reads as follows. "Whereas the Mission Damas Catolicas is a Catholic charitable organization first formed in 1928 at Our Lady of Guanajuca Church, whereas the Mission Damas Catolicas with a citywide membership provide charitable support to Christian organizations and mission and surrounding areas, including to young men attending the seminaries to the priesthood. Whereas this year marks the 90th anniversary of the Damas Catolicas in Mission, and whereas on June 23rd, 2018, the Mission Damas Catolicas will be celebrating their 90th anniversary with a religious service at Our Lady of Guanajuca Catholic Church in Mission. Now therefore, we the City Council of the City of Mission hereby proclaim the day of June 23rd, 2018, as Damas Catolicas Day in Mission and urge all citizens to join us in recognizing the dedication and hard work of all members. Proclaimed on this the 18th day of June, 2018."
I move for approval.
Second. We are motion and a second to approve the proclamation of Damas Catolicas Day. In this I open it for discussion and any individuals want to discuss any item? Any of the item?
No, sir.
Questions have been called for. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
I present Ms. Judy. I just want to thank you, Mayor. Congratulations and the rest of the City Council. We're very proud of being 90 years old.
Wow.
And we feel every year. Thank you. It's a special day for us and we really appreciate the support.
Do you mind taking a picture with the council and the mayor?
Of course not.
Thank you.
And accept the proclamation. Mr. O'Sill.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. I'll begin with recent events. On June 12th, we celebrated Lone Star Bank's newest location in Alton, and overall, we had over 200 people in attendance for this ribbon cutting. On June 14th, we hosted a ribbon cutting in partnership with RG Vision at the Double Tree Hotel, to which the proceeds raised benefited the court-appointed special advocates, also known as CASA. And overall, we had 125 people in attendance for this business mixer. In terms of upcoming events, we have a free workshop this week titled Grow Your Business with Google, scheduled for June 20th, from 10:30 a.m. to 12:30 p.m. at the Chamber of Commerce, and it is free of charge to our members. On Thursday, June 21st, we have a ribbon cutting scheduled for one of our newest members, E-Mattress. The ribbon cutting will take place at the Members' Place of Business, which the address is 708 North Conway, Suite 3, Mission, Texas. On Tuesday, June 26th, from 11:30 a.m. to 1 p.m. at the Chamber of Commerce, we will be hosting our new and potential member orientation titled Pizza with the President. And then lastly, on today's agenda, on Saturday, July 14th, we will be hosting a ribbon cutting and grand opening for Five by Five Brewery at the Mission Seed Building, beginning at 2 p.m. And, you know, we've had a really, really great response, so certainly hope that some of y'all can join us for this event. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. O'Sill. The City Departmental reports are in your packet. Any questions? Any comments?
I move to accept as presented.
Second. Motion and second, we accept the departmental's report as presented. This I open it for further discussion. No further discussion. Questions have been called for. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Citizens' participation. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to come before us? You have three minutes to discuss any issues that you would like to discuss with us. Please come to the mic and identify yourself, your name and address that you're from, for the record purpose.
Yes, my name is Jose Silva. 3111 Tulipent Street, Mission, Texas. I'm from here, Mission. I just wanted to kind of voice some opinions I had. Not sure if you guys are aware, and this is kind of something I want to know how we stand as a city. I know it's more of a federal issue, but I've been looking up how I've been seeing reports how immigrant families are being separated from their children, and they're planning to erect tent housing and militia bases for these children. I just wanted to see how we would be tackling that problem, considering we have a large Hispanic population.
Unfortunately, we cannot respond to your issues. The law doesn't allow us to.
Okay.
We'll just give you your three minutes, and then that's all I can do for you for right now.
I forfeit my time. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Go ahead, sir.
Buenas tardes. Quiero expresar a nombre del municipio Ciudad Madero, del presidente municipal, estamos aquí con toda la comunidad de Misión, con todo el cabildo. Una felicitación al mayor, Armando Ocaña, y a todo su cabildo. Un profundo agradecimiento de todo el cabildo de Ciudad Madero y de toda la ciudadanía, y así como manifestar que estamos dispuestos a que se sigan estrechando los vasos de amistad, de colaboración, en todos los sentidos que están enmarcados en el convenio, con el fin de que nuestras ciudades se superen día a día, tanto del sur de Tamaulipas como del sur de Texas. A todos ustedes muchas gracias y muchas felicidades.
Gracias.
Please state your name and addresses.
My name is Robert Cumbia Williams-Sanders. I don't have much to say, only that I'm very proud of you and Dr. Ocaña and the rest of the board, Mr. Caso, I've known you for a long time. And if they didn't tell you Happy Father's Day, maybe they forgot, but I'm telling you that.
Yeah.
And please, take good care of Dr. Ocaña. He is a very good man.
Thank you.
That's all I have to say, and God bless you all.
We will. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Anybody else would like to address the council as a citizen of participation?
Hello, everyone. I'm Joe Luis Sanchez. This is an incredibly refreshing view for me and for our city, and I want to say that we're very proud of you, Dr. Ocaña and everyone here. We look forward to all the great things that our city will do. We stand by you and each and every one of you. Thank you so much for presenting our city and putting us on the map. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay. We'll move on to our public hearings, planning and zoning recommendations. Mr. O'Sullivan.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Item 1.1A is a public hearing for a rezoning of a 1.64 acre tract of land, being the south 249 feet of the west, 112 feet of the south, 660 feet of lot 25-10, west addition to Sherwood Land Subdivision. The property is currently zoned AOI agriculture, open interim, and the request is to rezonate to C1 office building. The applicant is Dr. Jose Picasso, and if the council is inclined to approve this rezoning request, it would require the adoption of an ordinance. On June 13th, 2018, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to consider this rezoning request. The subject site is located a quarter mile west of Bryan Road, along the northern side of Griffin Parkway. The surrounding zones include large lot, single-family, R1A to the north. We have Concho Estates, Phase 2. To the west and to the east, we have agricultural property. I believe there's a vacant lot and a large estate-style home to the east. The -- to the south, we have single-family residential. Dr. Carrera, I believe, lives on the south side. And Dr. Picasso is wanting to rezone this to C1 so that he can practice. Dr. Picasso is a chiropractor, and he wants to execute his practice from this location. The residence would continue to look like a residence, and it's -- Dr. Picasso operates by himself. He doesn't have a large staff, and most of his clients are by appointment only. The only change that you would see is a forest-based parking facility in the front of the property. In talking to Dr. Picasso, the landscaping, the trees, everything is going to be staying as is. There was no opposition during the P&amp;Z meeting. The board unanimously recommended approval of this rezoning. Staff is recommending approval, as is our city manager. This is a public hearing. Item 1.1A is now before you.
This being a public hearing, we open it for the public, either for or against the item. And just come to the PA and present yourself, and state your name and address, and give your cause. What's the duty of the requirement, Martin?
We notify a 200-foot radius from each corner of the property. And I believe he did speak to some of the neighbors, one of them being Mrs. Schroder, and she was okay with the request.
Right, so Mr. Picasso, as well, he went knocking on several doors. He made contact with the neighbors, advised them of what the project was going to entail. I believe Mr. Picasso is also here. Mr. Picasso, I don't know if you have any comments to add, but my understanding is there is no opposition at the meeting, and also the neighbors are okay with that. But it's 200 feet around the radius. Yes, sir.
Sir, if you want to address the public hearing, go ahead, sir, either for or against. Obviously, maybe for, because you're the applicant, but come up and state your --
Good afternoon, Mayor. Congratulations, first of all. I wanted to congratulate other City Council. This is what I want to do. I want to convert this house into a commercial building, so with your permission, I will be more than happy.
Anybody else? For or against? Public hearing. Anybody else? For or against?
I move for approval as presented.
I would like to second that motion.
We are motion to approve as presented. And second, by Mr. Plata, and this I open it for council discussion. Any council discussion?
No.
No council discussion, then at this time, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, sir.
Thank you, and God bless you.
Thank you, sir.
And approve.
That would be ordinance 4643.
Approving ordinance 4643.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
We open the next --
Okay. Thank you, Mayor and Council. Item 1.1B is a public hearing for a conditional use permit for home occupation. This is for a registered home provider. A registered home provider is the state of Texas's new name for a daycare facility from home. They're calling it a registered home provider. This is at 2003 West 40th Street, Lot 68, Torres Estates, Number 9, Phase 3 subdivision. The property is zoned R1, single-family residential, and the applicant is Iliana Fraire. And if the council is inclined to approve this conditional use permit, it would require the adoption of an ordinance. On June 13th, 2018, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to consider this conditional use permit request. The subject site is located near the Hillcrest Drive and West 40th Street intersection along the south side of West 40th Street. If approved, the applicant will be converting a living room and one of the bedrooms into the daycare facility. The hours of operation are Monday through Friday from 7:00 a.m. to 6:30 p.m., and Saturday from 8:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. The applicant and one other employee will be manning this operation. There was no public opposition during the P&amp;Z meeting. The board unanimously recommended approval. Staff is recommending approval of this conditional use permit, subject to a one-year reevaluation to monitor this new childcare facility. We're also asking that the applicant be DHS certified, and that they comply with the home occupation portion of our zoning code, and that they obtain a business license. Our city manager is also recommending approval. This is a public hearing item. Item 1.1B is now before you.
I open it for a public hearing, for a public for or against. Please approach the bench. For or against? Please state your name and address, please.
Good afternoon. Congratulations, Mayor.
Thank you.
And Council. As an educator, these are really great ideas to both the economy by taking care of children. However, many of those homes are not -- maybe they don't take special children because they're not compliant. I just want the council to be more aware that you will have more traffic, you will have more noise, you will have more trash that has to be disposed, and I just want to make sure that all these children are taken care appropriately, especially if you have kids who are autistic, who have communication problems, who have the placing and the running, that those children with special needs do not be excluded. And that's all. And remember, if they comply, and they're in there to help everybody, I have no problem. But I just want to caution that only because a person is registered does not mean that the environment is appropriate for children with special needs. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else? For or against? Anybody else? For and against? Anybody else? For or against? And this I open it for further discussion from the council.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
The request describes the living room as being part of the facility or the living room and one of the bedrooms?
Yes. They'll be using the kitchen as well to make the food preparations, but yeah, primarily the children will be either in the living room or in one of the bedrooms.
But somebody will be living at the house also, or is it?
The applicant and her husband live at the house. The husband works during the day, so he's not going to be there during the day. It'll just be the applicant and another person that are going to be the only employees for this operation.
Is the applicant here?
She was notified of the meeting. I'm not certain. I don't believe she is.
I don't know if this is an issue, but I think this is the first time we've seen where the actual daycare facility is going to be the living room of the home.
In the past, it's always -- for the most part, it's the garage that they convert into the --
But you did say that they were certified with the state of Texas.
That's one of the conditions of approval, that they bring us their certifications.
Had they brought that in or no?
No, the first step is to see whether or not the city will allow them to operate, and then they'll seek their certifications.
Because of the expenditure that comes along with it.
Expenditures, yes. There's trainings and certain expenditures.
Right. Yes.
I feel a little uncomfortable that the applicant is not here. I mean, so it's just, I don't know how much priority this is for her, so I -- there's no other further discussion. I would like to deny the request.
I'm going to second that motion. I'm -- again, I'm uncomfortable with the living room being the center part of the daycare facility.
We have a motion on the floor, and second, to deny the conditional use permit for home occupation registered. I will open for further discussion for the other City Council individuals for input.
Or we can table it. We can table it for next week or whatever. See if she'll show up, but yeah. I'd like to ask her a couple of questions.
My concern is in the living room. There's glass tabletops.
Yeah.
There's going to be children there. That's a safety concern for me.
Is this something that --
And I'd like for her to be here.
Is this something that the state will also have a concern with? Like, they'll probably say why the living room or why --
Yeah, this is the way the house is now. I mean, I'm sure that once the state goes in there, they're going to have certain guidelines that they must follow.
Yeah. Any other discussions?
Ms. O'Sullivan, I have a question. How many homes like this do we have? People that have this type of business in their homes that provide daycare services?
We have, I mean, just most -- the most recent one that comes to mind is on 42nd Street, which is two blocks north. Selene Garcia, I believe, was the applicant, who has a house, but she converted the garage into the daycare facility, like Ms. Garcia was mentioning. But we do have these home occupations that pop up periodically. They open, sometimes they close them after a couple of years. But we do have several throughout the city.
I'd like to also table it and have her come in, because if we say no to it completely, how long will it take for her to come back and apply?
She would have to come in -- she would have to wait six months before she re-appears.
Okay.
But there's some motion on the table.
I was going to say, we have a motion on the table, and we have a -- unless you're making a motion to -- or you withdrawn your motion, Mr. Plata. You keeping your motion?
Yes, I mean, I'm like, I'm very concerned this is going to be a children's place, and I know the table and all of that can be moved, but I just -- and maybe for the future, you know, anybody that is applying for some type of permit like that, I think it's important for them to come. I mean, nobody is going to advocate for their project like their own, like themselves, so I think it's important that they come.
I don't hear a motion to table, right? Well, there's a motion to deny, but if that's going to be, I guess, rescinded, I'll move to table. We have motion to table?
Second.
Second. Now, legal?
Do we need to resume?
If we already entertain a regular motion, and we have a motion on top to table, which one proceed?
The motion to table takes precedence over any other motion on the table, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Any concerns for the council to go ahead and call for a vote to table? No, sir. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. His item is tabled. Open the 1.1C, conditional use permit, drive-through to convenience store, public hearing.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Item 1.1C is a public hearing for a conditional use permit for a drive-through convenience store. This is at 1001 West Expressway 83, being lots 35 and 36 of Freeway Subdivision Unit 3. The property is owned C3, and the applicant is Gerardo Martinez. And if the council is inclined to approve this conditional use permit, it would require the adoption of an ordinance. On June 13th, 2018, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to consider this conditional use permit request. The site is located at the southwest corner of Expressway 83 and San Pedro Street. This CUP was originally approved on March 12th of 2014, then, and then it was approved several other times. However, the applicant, or Mr. Martinez, never did open his drive-through business for financial reasons, and the applicant has alerted staff that he's ready to proceed now. And his hours of operation are every day, 10 a.m. to 12 a.m., with two employees manning the operation. Parking is existing. There's seven parking spaces, and then if we factor in the three cars that can stack, we have a total of 10 parking spaces, where eight are required for a business of this size. There was no public opposition during the P&amp;Z meeting. The board unanimously recommended approval. Staff is recommending approval, subject to a one-year reevaluation. We're also asking that they install additional landscaping, that they restructure the parking lot facility, and that they comply with all building, fire, health, and sign codes, and that they obtain a business license. Our city manager is also recommending approval. This is a public hearing. Item 1.1C is now before you.
Is anybody in favor or against this request? Is there anybody in favor or against this request? Is there anybody in favor or against this request? In this, I entertain a motion.
I move to approve as presented, but I will have a question.
Okay.
Second.
We have a motion, second, and I'll open it for discussion.
The question that I have is, it does say must install additional landscaping, but that's kind of vague, so what is -- what are you actually going to require, other than just additional?
Or to clean the --
This lot has very limited right-of-way or property, because most of it is state right-of-way along the expressway, but we would like for the applicant to install some shrubs or maybe plant a tree, something to make the area look better. Right now, as you can see, it's just grass, and it's even, I guess, spreading over onto the paved concrete area, so we just want the applicant to make it look a little bit nicer.
But shouldn't we give him some better direction, as far as what is actually --
Right, if -- We could specify.
Well, if I'm not mistaken, you do have an ordinance in place that specifies, as per the square footage of the lot, how many trees are required, how many brush are required, and so forth, right?
It's a percentage of greenery that's required. It's 30% on a commercial lot, and it's not very specific as to how many trees. It just is a combination of shrubs and trees.
Okay, so when we present these items to the council, make sure that based on that ordinance, we give that recommendation attached to the condition of the permit.
And if you need the ordinance to be adjusted, you know, we meet with us, and we'll bring back the ordinance to add more to it if you need that leverage.
Sounds good.
More so for the applicant, because, you know, they need to be, you know, well aware of what is needed and expected.
Yes.
I think it would be a good idea from now on to bring something like a heist is going to look like, and, I mean, maybe pictures or something.
Some type of exhibit.
I mean, they need to really try to sell the project to the council, and pictures speaks thousands of words, so.
Yes. Sure, we could require those.
Right, and the other thing, Mr. Plata, just to add to that, is that we don't release a conditional use permit until those conditions are met, right? And so, however, they don't do the implementation of the landscaping, because it takes an investment, and so they want to make sure they secure the permit before they actually make the investment, but the actual permit is not released until the actual project is completed.
What about lighting?
They don't have any parking lighting. The only lighting that they have is in the form of some lights on the walls. It wasn't a requirement at the P&amp;Z meeting, but if the council would want to install some parking lights, we could definitely request additional lighting for the parking area.
Do we have any ordinance on that?
Can we ask him to do it?
Those are addressed during the building permit of the actual facility, not during the CUP, but this is going to be a drive-through business, so the majority of the customers are going to be coming in through Pedro Street and exiting it onto the frontage. I don't foresee too many people parking for this particular business.
But being a conditional use permit, we can request --
You can impose that condition, correct.
Then I would like to add additional lighting for the parking lot.
So noted. Any other discussion? Any other questions? Any other discussion, any other questions? Call for a vote of adoption of ordinance 4644?
Yes, sir.
4644, approving 1.1C for one, for one year. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next item, 1, 1.1D, conditional use permit in and out drive-through convenience store.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council. Item 1.1D is a public hearing for a conditional use permit of in-and-out drive-through convenience store. This is at 1401 North Conway Avenue, being lots 7 and 8 of Block 230, Mission original townsite. And if the council is inclined to approve this conditional use permit request, it would require the adoption of an ordinance. The Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to consider the renewal of this conditional use permit. This is an existing drive-through service business that has been in operation since 2014. The most recent approval came in April 27 of 2015, at which time a three-year conditional use permit was granted. The hours of operation for the drive-through business are Sunday through Friday from 12:00 p.m. to 12:00 a.m., and Saturday from 12:00 p.m. to 1:00 a.m. There's a, there's a total of four employees that man this operation. There was no public opposition during the P&amp;Z meeting. The board unanimously recommended approval. Staff is recommending approval for another three-year period. Our city manager is also recommending approval. This is a public hearing. Item 1.1D is now before you.
I'll open it for anybody in favor or against this request? Anybody in favor or against this request? Anybody in favor or against this request? This I open it for-
Yes, sir, you have-
Go ahead, come in, sir.
The map, or were this exactly located? And what street is that?
It's located on Conway and 14th Street. It's at northwest corners. Yes, sir.
I move for approval as presented.
Second, Mayor.
I would just have one question. What were the hours of operation?
The hours of operation? Let me accept the motion, and the motion, and the second, and then I can open it, open it for discussion. Go ahead, Mr. Plata.
What were the hours of operations for the one on 495 Griffin Parkway? This one is to 1 o'clock-
The one on 495, I believe it was from, from 12:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m., eight hours. And this one is from 12:00 p.m. to 12:00 a.m., and Saturday from 12:00 p.m. to 1:00 a.m.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? No other discussion? Adoption of ordinance 4645, approving 1.1D. All those in favor, say aye.
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 All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Acevedo. We move over to disposition of minutes, 2.0. First, we have the city council meetings of May 29, 2018.
Mayor, I want to approve.
Any, any changes or additions on the, on the minutes?
Second.
We have a motion to accept the, and second, to accept the minutes. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Moving over to 3.0, acknowledgement receipts of minutes for Parks and Recreation Board, January 9, 2018, Mission Civil Service Commission, May 10, 2018, and Planning and Zoning Commission, May, May 23, 2018.
Mayor, I want to approve the acknowledged receipt of minutes.
Second.
Motion and second to approve the acknowledgement receipts of the minutes, as stated. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Moving to 4.0, approval and authorizations. I call for item 4.1, preliminary plat approval of 6 Western Vegas subdivision. Mr. Acevedo.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Item 4.1 is a preliminary plat approval of 6 Western Vegas subdivision. This is a 20-acre tract of land in our ETJ. The developers, Texas Ranch LLC, and the engineers, Alfonso Quintanilla of Quintanilla Headline Associates. This is, this is a 12-lot, single-family residential lot subdivision located along the east side of Western Road and the north side of Mile 6 North Road. The water CCN belongs to Awa Sud, and the developer's proposing the use of septic tanks for these lots. All of them exceed the minimum half-acre requirement. And this item was previously, not tabled, but I believe we took no action on this item at the last meeting, because we were waiting for an approved drainage report. The drainage report was included in the packet that was sent out to the mayor and the council, and it was approved by the Yalu County Drainage District, and this item was approved by the P&amp;Z. Staff is recommending approval, as is our city manager. Item 4.1 is now before you.
I move to approve the preliminary plat as presented.
Second.
Motion and second to approve the, the preliminary plat, 6 Western Vegas subdivision. I, I have a question, if you don't mind. On the drainage report, is it reviewed by anybody from our city? And our city says it's, it's okay also?
Our city engineer, JP Terrazas, reviews all the drainage reports that come into the-
And he says it's okay for this?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. 4.2, authorization to purchase two MyoVision Scotts and Connect Bundle traffic counters. Chief Dominguez.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Item 4.2 is authorization to purchase two MyoVision Scout and Connect Bundle traffic counters via sole source vendor, being MyoVision Technologies, Inc. The purchase of this equipment will allow the city of Mission to utilize the most updated technology in gathering highway traffic data within our city. The information gathered will provide us with statistics for improved roadway design, congestion management, and roadway safety. The total amount of the project of cost is $10,023.3. Staff and city manager recommend approval for the purchase of the equipment, sir.
Do I have any discussion from the council?
I move for approval as presented.
Second.
Motion and second to approve the authorization to purchase the items presented by Chief Dominguez. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Call for item 4.3, sign code variance request to allow a 90, 980 square foot sign.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Item 4.3 is a sign code variance request to allow a 980 square foot sign at 2309 East Expressway 83, being Lot 1 of Burt Ogden Mazda subdivision, as requested by the Burt Ogden Auto Group. Burt, the Burt Ogden is located at the northwest corner of Sherry and Expressway 83, and one of the things that they want to do is, instead of spending and television advertising, is they want to focus more on ground signs. And what Burt Ogden is proposing is that they're proposing to install where the arrow is pointing to, in a, in a green area between the Burt Ogden dealership and the Chase Bank, is that they're proposing a 39-foot, 6.2-inch sign by 24-feet, 3.3-quarter-inch sign, which equates to 980 square feet. And currently, the city code allows a ground pole sign to be up to 800 square feet, so this one exceeds it by 180 square feet. As far as the height of the sign, being that it is along the expressway corridor, they're allowed to go as high as 80 feet, and what, what they're proposing is 75 feet. So it's, it doesn't need a variance on the height, but it will need a variance if they want to construct it as presented at 980 square feet. This is a, this item was not presented to the, to the P&amp;Z. This is an item that comes straight to the city council. Staff is recommending approval, as is our city manager. Item 4.3 is now before you.
Any questions from any of the council members?
Is this a three-sided sign?
It's a three-face sign, correct. They want people to see it from all directions, so.
Okay, so that's basically why it's over the square footage?
No, actually, that's per face. You're allowed to have 800 square feet per face, and it's a three-face sign, so.
Yes.
Oh, wow.
That's a big sign.
It's really, really big, yes.
Yes, but we need to, we need those kind of signs at, at the expressway, because people are passing from, from Palmview to McAllen, and we need to put them over, so they can stop in Mission and shop in Mission, so, so that's the idea.
Move for approval, Mayor.
Second.
Motion and second to approve the sign ordinance variance for Burt Ogden, and I'll open it. Any, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, and Mr. Acevedo, I just, I just want to let you know that to take this standard and put it into our ordinance, so other companies that want to do the signs, they don't have to come to us. You know, they just go straight to the permit, and we can begin to streamline, streamline the-
An amendment to the current sign ordinance.
Right, so we'll look at the ordinance, and we'll bring it back to the council, and-
Yes.
Okay.
Just take, take the standard from there and, and put it in the, and put it into the ordinance, so we can begin to be a little bit more competitive out on the expressway, you know, yes.
Thank you, hi, ma'am.
Thank you, sir. I'm calling for approval of resolution 1555 of the City of Texas Approving Cooperative with Cities Served by AEP. Mr. Perez?
Yes, good afternoon, Mayor and Council. The item 4.4 is approval of the resolution of the City of Mission to cooperate with the cities served by AEP to review AEP Texas' Adjustment in Energy Efficiency Cost Recovery Factor. On June 1, 2018, AEP filed a, an application with the Public Utility Commission to adjust the 2019 Energy Efficiency Cost Recovery Factor. This resolution authorizes the city to join with cities and served by AEP to include and retain the law firm of Lloyd Roslinken Consultants to negotiate with the company, make recommendations to the city regarding reasonable rates, and direct any necessary administrative proceedings, or court litigations associated with the appeal of this application filed with the PUC. Staff recommendation at this time is approval of this resolution as presented.
Any discussion from any of the council members?
Move for approval.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to approve the resolution 1555. This I open it for, for voting. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
4.5, authorizes, authorization to award bids.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. I come before you to present item 4.5, authorization to award bid to Holman LLC for the expansion of the Ubau Building, Upper Valley R League. We received six bid responses. Staff is recommending to award Holman LLC, who's the lowest responsible bidder, meeting all the specifications, in the amount of $24,000. Staff and city manager recommends approval.
Any discussion from any of the council members? Do I hear a motion?
I want to approve.
Second.
Motion and second to approve as presented. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. I also have item 4.6, authorization to execute first one-year renewal option for COCO pavement services on as-needed basis. Renew with valley striping, first one-year renewal option at 0% increase, which stays the same as 15 cents per square foot. All those will be placed on as-needed basis. Staff and city manager recommends approval.
At this time, I'll open it for discussion by any of the council persons.
So zero increase.
That's correct, zero increase. Yes, sir.
I want to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve and second to authorize the execution of first one-year renewal option for COCO pavement services. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Mr. Mungia, 4.7. Mr. Mungia.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I'm here representing Naomi from the HR Department. We're seeking authorization to solicit bids for stop laws to authorize city's agent GEF Financial Group to solicit bids. This insurance will cover all costs exceeding the city deductible and all claims for medical and prescription services. Staff and city manager recommends approval.
I move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve. I have, I have a question. As far as, how many companies participated in, in this process?
Four bids?
Yes.
Let me see if I have that here. We do have a few, let me see.
Just general numbers, two, three, five, you know?
Maybe like five.
Between five and seven, yes.
We had input from our employees before, before we set it out for bids?
From employees? No.
No.
We use historical data to determine what's, the, to determine the scope of service, the scope that we're gonna solicit for bids on.
And how about the scope of needs?
The scope-
Needs?
Needs. We, we can definitely take that into consideration this time around to determine that factor.
This is for how long?
This will be, this is for one year.
One, yes. Thank you. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. I have, I still have another one.
Thank you, ma'am.
We're seeking authorization to solicit proposals for Employee Assistant Program Services, which is EAP provides counseling services for all employees on personal and work-related issues at no cost to the employee. One-year contract with two renewal options have been exhausted, and we're seeking authorization to solicit RFP. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
Any input from, or discussion from the council?
No, Mayor. I want to approve.
So we have a, a motion to approve the EAP. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second has been called for, and this I, I open it for further discussion.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
So, Nareda, are you, you're opening up for bids to get another company to come in?
Right.
Okay. What are we doing to offer to make sure that every single city employee know what this stands for? Because I still have employees that don't even know EAP.
EAP provides posters to us. We always communicate with the employees as far as when they first come in during enrollment or a new hire orientation. We send out emails. We ask department directors to post, you know, flyers, so that they can have the information. So we try to promote it, you know, as much as we can.
How about each director? Each director doesn't promote the EAP?
Right, yes, yes. We do send this information to the directors, yes, so that they can go ahead and promote it as well. And we do have directors that call us, asking for information.
That's good, that's good.
And it's also offered through open enrollment.
Right. So my last question would be, how many employees have used this agency in the past year?
We do have reports. Of course, this is completely confidential. There's different types of counseling, counseling that they offer, so for every type of counseling per se, there's different numbers. But I can tell you that maybe, and really, I can't give you an exact number right now, because it all depends on the type, but maybe like 10 employees per case. It all depends on what the situation is that they're calling for.
Okay, so I would just like to see more of us working together to make sure every employee knows of this. It's like, it's very little.
Right, mhm, yes.
Right now, with mental health being at the forefront, a lot of families have different types of issues, and I'd like city employees to know that this is a service offered to them for free, and their family members.
Correct, yes, mhm.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And the key word is free, you know?
Yes.
That's the key word.
Yes.
You know, so. No further discussions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
4.9, authorize the purchase of 200-96-gallon garbage carts. Mr. G.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. Authorize the purchase 200-96-gallon garbage carts via HDAC, contract number RC01-18 for the city sanitation department. The carts will be used for inventory and future growth of the city. Estimated cost $12,232.00. Type and city manager recommend approval.
Open it for discussion by the council.
Move for approval.
Second.
First and second, and this I open it for further discussion and questions. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
4.10, authorization to accept irrigation controller Benson. Mr. Benson.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. I have before you, item 4.10, is authorization to accept irrigation controller. The South Texas Sez Manager for Weathermatic Irrigation Systems wishes to donate one SmartLink bundle, SL- bundle, SL, excuse me, one Smartlink SL four thousand eight hundred bundle, which is to be used at Leo Peña Plaza Park. The estimated cost of this bundle is one thousand two hundred dollars. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
That's nice of him. I move for approval.
Second.
First and second to authorize the acceptance of the irrigation controller. Open it for discussion by the council. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brad. Thank you, Mr. Benson.
Four eleven, authorization to award bids for replacement of a ten-inch high-service pump. Mr. Salinas, sir.
Yes, sir. Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council members. Second before you, seeking authorization to award bids for the replacement of a ten-inch high-service pump and motor at the North Water Treatment Plant. The city of Mission has received six bid responses for this project. Staff recommends awarding to Fair Glow Inc., DBA International Machine Shop, who is the lowest responsible bidder meeting all specification. The bid amount was of sixty thousand dollars to replace this pump and motor. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
I open it for discussion by any council. Have any questions or any?
Were there more bidders on this?
More what, I'm sorry?
People that bid on the project.
Yes, yes, sir, yes, sir, five. Five bid responses, including the low bidder, who is International Machine Shop. Yes, sir.
Any other questions?
I move for approval.
Motion.
Second.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Mr. Salinas, four point twelve, authorization to solicit the bids for storm drainage and street improvements.
Yes, sir, Mayor and City Council members. Next agenda, next agenda item, four point twelve, is the authorization to solicit bids for storm drainage and the street improvements at Anne Marie Drive, Marinelle Lane. That's from Bryan West to the golf course, which is the cul-de-sac. Project improvements include storm drainage, curb and gutter replacement and adjustments, utility adjustment, and asphalt overlay. The, the approximate construction cost for this project will be at four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
Discussion by the council. I move for approval, Mayor.
Second.
Approve, first and second to approve. This I open it for further discussion in case there are discussions, no discussions, then.
Just real quick, the plan for Bryan Road between Old eighty-three and four ninety-five, will this kind of tie in with that project?
Yes, yes. Once we get to the next, next budget, we're planning to solicit for bids also for the Bryan storm drainage and, and road reconstruction from Business eighty-three to four ninety-five. That's, that's coming up on our next fiscal year budget, yes.
Is there any road reconstruction for, for Marinelle?
There's sections of reconstruction, yes, that are in bad shape.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
No other questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Four point thirteen, authorization to award bid for copper sulfur for the north and south water plant, treatment plant. Mr. Salinas.
Yes, sir, Mayor and City Council members. Item four point thirteen is the authorization to award bid for copper sulfur for the north and south water treatment plants. The city of Mission has received five bid responses for this chemical. Staff has recommended to award to Chemtrick Chemicals US LOC, who is the lowest responsible bidders, bidder meeting all specification. The estimated cost for this chemical is of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for a one-year term. Orders will be placed on a as needed basis. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
Discussion by the council.
I move for approval.
Motion to approve and second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Four point fourteen, authorization to enter into an interlocal agreement with the National Cooperative Purchasing Alliance. Mr. Delmar.
Yes, sir. Bring before you item four point fourteen, authorization to enter into an interlocal agreement with National Cooperative Purchasing Alliance, NCPA. Feature acquisitions of technology, office, facilities, construction, athletics, transportation, furniture, food services, and environmental are offered under this cooperative pursuant to, to the Interlocal Cooperation Act, Chapter seven ninety-one, subchapter two seventy-one C of the Texas government, local government that purchases goods or services under this subchapter satisfies any state law requiring the local government to seek competitive bids for the purchase of goods or services. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
Open for discussion for the other council.
Mayor, I'm going to approve.
Motion to approve. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, and don't forget that when you use it, to call our local vendors.
Yes, sir.
Give the courtesy, the courtesy call to our local vendors, please.
Definitely. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Four point fifteen, authorizations for surplus machinery and equipment. Ms. Vela.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. Item four fifteen is authorization to surplus attached machinery and equipment. The attached list contains items that staff has determined is no longer used to the city, is minor equipment and seized equipment from the police department. Surplus items will be sold in online auction, and those items with no resale value will be disposed. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
Any discussion by any of the council persons?
Move for approval, Mayor.
Do I hear a second? A motion second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Budget amendment, Hotel Motel Fund. Vela.
Item four sixteen is the approval of the attached budget amendment. The budget amendment is in the Hotel Motel Fund. It is a reclassification of twenty-four thousand dollars, which is necessary for the Uval Building Expansion Project. Funds will be reclassified to capital outlay since the project will be handled by the city of Mission.
I move for approval.
Second.
Motion to approve and second, and this I open it for further discussion by any of the other council members. No discussion, then all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you.
Moving right along to five point oh, unfinished business. Five point one, authorization to enter into reclaim water use agreement with San Juan Country Club for irrigation purposes. It is tabled, I would like to recommend to the, to the council that we take no action here, so the tabled item can be, can fizzle out, and, and I would like to meet and have a workshop, a workshop so that Mr. City Manager set up a workshop so, so the project can be introduced to the new city council person, and at the same time, introduced to all of us in a refresher of where we're at and where we're going with it in the future. Any questions from the other council members?
Okay, recommendation.
I move for approval.
Be good. Okay, then I'll call for the next, the routine items. City manager's comment?
Mayor, just to make a comment at your request, we are live streaming on Facebook as we speak. If you look at the camera right there, and that is just to continue the transparency in our government, and I want to thank Charlie in the media department for helping us put that up. So, thank you.
Thank you, Charlie.
And from the mayor's comment is welcome the public, welcome the public and board. You know, we're going to transparent as much as we can that, and what is legal for us to do, you know, because I know there's items that we have to go to executive session that we cannot do, but people understand that we're a city of law and order, you know, and we do have lawyers on board now in the council.
That's right.
As well as on staff, so the, I want to thank the citizens of Mission for giving me this opportunity to be here before you, and this blessing that I, that I received and, and that I, that I will cherish for the rest of my life, you know, as far as that is concerned, coming in for a long, long life dream as a, from South Mission, growing up that one of these days I wanted to grow up to be a mayor, and here it is, I'm here. So, thank you, and I also want to share this agenda item, agenda item with my, my colleagues, our city council, to, I will open for any city council person to make any comment, and I would recommend for our legal to look at adding six point three, city council comments there on the item. When the first, the first day that I became a city councilman, I said, where, where do I talk? You know, and, you know, and it's whatever we need to do as far as to get, get it in there so we can legally comply and allow our, all our council members before we leave on the day, on the, on the day of the, the meeting, that they'll be able to, to make their, their comments of what, whatever they want. So, without further ado, I'll start from my right and go all the way to the left.
Are you sure you don't want to start with our newly appointed Gus Martinez?
No, because he'll probably talk for six hours, so.
No, no.
Okay.
Thirty seconds.
But if you want to give him the courtesy.
Yes, let's start with this, and I'll be, I'll be the last one.
Mr. Gus Martinez, welcome.
Thank you, Eric Kelly. Really, I have an announcement. As a, as a board member on the Education Foundation, the Mission CISD, we are having a concert at the Mission Event Center, July the fifth. We're bringing down the spathematics. The tables are seven hundred and fifty bucks for, you know, if you want to get a table. The tickets are thirty-five dollars on their own. So, all the money raised will go towards the foundation, which, which gives scholarships to students and grants to teachers, and we're closing in about a quarter million dollars after our fourth year here, so come check out the spathematics, call me, but call a lift. And that's all I have, except I have a question, Mayor. Can I meet my dogs in the city council meeting? Sure.
I'll have Mr. Garza back there, Homer. Yeah.
Yeah.
Other than that, thank you, Mayor. It's a privilege to be here.
Ms. Garza?
Yes, I know that the Amigos del Valle approached the city to provide free lunch for children under eighteen years of age at our Amigos del Valle site. I just want to make sure that that has been, that information has been dispersed.
We're participating, ma'am. We have Chief Dominguez and his staff that has been participating the last week or two already, chief?
Yes, compared to last week, we did like three days last week.
And how did that go?
Great.
Good?
Good.
Our city also partner, we already have a list of the ones that went out, and we're going to continue that.
Great. Back in the day, we used to provide meals at the Boys and Girls Club sites. Are we still doing that?
Well, we do have it through the, through the summer program. Mr. Everly, you want to address that?
Yes.
Yeah, we do have it through the school district, we run in in three different sites, so.
Which sites are those?
Six hundred, six hundred breakfasts every day and six hundred lunches.
And which sites are those provide, those meals provided?
Yeah, we have the sites.
No, 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 which sites?
Which sites?
It's going to be the main unit in Conway.
Yes.
Main Mary, C2B, and Sherland and Mamford.
Okay.
All required and offered.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I'm not selling no tickets, so no, no, but, um, no activities running on, but I just want to congratulate Dr. Canio. I'm here to continue working. There is a lot to do in the city, and we must work in unity to provide the best services, the best resources to the citizens of Mission. We must work together. We're not always going to agree, but it's good to disagree, to be able to use everybody's expertise to bring what's best for the citizens of Mission. I think all of us have that in our hearts and in our minds, that we are elected to serve and to keep nothing but the best from ourselves. Thank you, and congratulations.
Mayor and City Council, there's not a better appropriate time than the present for our city to evaluate its current condition. More importantly, we can do even better for our citizens of Mission. As we serve both as members of this council and our public employees of the city of Mission, and while we can fill this room with many, many accomplishments, I represent the residents of this city, and I say that we can do more for all of them. It is my recommendation that we obtain an independent performance and management review of all departments, which will also include an employee survey, providing feedback and direction that they obtain from their supervisors and directors. Furthermore, the study shall identify areas in which improvements may be needed for innovation and technology to better serve our residents. Professional service should be obtained immediately so that a report can be given to us as council and you, Mayor, within ninety days.
And I'll take it a little further. We'll take that, those results and, and use them as our needs assessment for, for, we want to create a ten-year plan for the city of Mission, comprehensive ten-year plan for the city of Mission, so, just FYI, and I'm meeting with, also with the, the three school boards that serve the city of Mission, the Sherland School Board, Mission School Board, and La Jolla ISD School Board. I've already confirmed two school boards that we're going to meet. We are going to, in order for us to meet together, even though, even though we don't,